Good morning. This is the time that was noticed and posted for our Board of Supervisors meeting for today. It's Tuesday, April the 11th, 2023. It's 10 o'clock a.m. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane in Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at this meeting, and the board may vote to go into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agendas pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. And we begin with the roll call. District one?
Morning, Madam Chair Crosby is here.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three?
Good morning Supervisor Judd is here on the computer.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 6281497. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak to an agenda item, or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and this means that presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public, and there are several. The rules are you have three minutes. You come to the podium, you give us your name, address, and then you have three minutes. If you will notice, there is a light. It is green to begin with. It turns orange when you have one minute left, and then it turns red, and then you will be cut off at that particular point in time. So the first person is Dr. Melvin Harder.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Melvin Harder. I reside at 2300 Lexington Drive in Sierra Vista, Arizona. I am a taxpayer here in Cochise County and have been for the last 20 years. Our ministry owns several properties here in Cochise County and pays over $2,500 a year in tax, real estate taxes. I was concerned about Mr. Coxworth, the director of the Cochise Development Department. And I was concerned as much as he's going to be selling the tabernacle, the church, and the very large prayer dome there. I first contacted Mr. Coxworth in May of 2022. He's quite pleasant, and I requested a walk through Bible College campus. I mentioned I was, my wife and I were going on a cruise for our anniversary, and he mentioned that he would get with me as soon as I returned, and would let me come on to the college campus. I returned, made my phone call. I was unable to reach him until the month of July, and finally he did respond, and he let me present a meeting on the following Monday morning. We're right there at 8:30 on Monday morning, and he gave me 20 minutes, to be exact, no more than 20 minutes is all I had. I quickly went through the property as much as I could in a short length of time, and doing so, I could only get into the tabernacle. The rest of the buildings were locked. I could only take pictures through the glass windows. That's all I could do. I was rather disappointed. He said he had misspoken when he told me he would let me come. I don't know how he got misspoken with that was what he said. And then I discovered the action in Friday's paper, March 24th, that stated that an article to complete to redo the reversal of what he stated to me in October of '22. Then I look at March 24th, excuse me, 29th, rather, I see where the tabernacle has been taken down. I am opposition to Mr. Coxworth, and I think that number one, I don't think he's qualified to make such determinations. He's planning to tear down the big tabernacle and the church, and the dome, the prayer dome, and I'm total opposition to that. I think he did not involve the citizens of this county in any decision-making process, and I think he is not qualified to make a determination that if he tears these buildings down, he could actually get a million dollars out of that property. That's it. We know that's incorrect, totally. So I'm in opposition, and that's my point of view right now. Thank you.
Next is Daryl Willhite.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Daryl Willhead of Crystal Light Ministries in Sierra Vista, Arizona. I currently reside at 800 South Carmichael Avenue. I first began to investigate the issues in this property around November of last year, and I contacted Mr. Coxworth, and he's very gracious in allowing me to come on the property and view the property. I did some checking, found some history on the property as well. So I'll start there. AA Allen started Miracle Valley Training Center and Christian School in September 1958. Hundreds of students attended. Miracle Valley was later known as, in 1963, as Miracle Valley Bible College. Amen. Allen, the evangelist, was found dead in his hotel room in San Francisco at 59 years of age. Allen is also buried on the above ground behind the Bible College. His monument is inscribed with a drawing of praying hands, a revival tent, and the words "God's Man" of faith and power. Property was languishing over the next few years. In 1978, a group of healing center and church members from Mississippi began arriving in the community. Over the next couple of years, this culminated with a Miracle Valley shootout and confrontation between members of the church Miracle Healing Center and the Cochise County Police Department. Moving further on, recently, the property was said to have been going to be auctioned off, but then suddenly there was a story in the Sierra Vista Herald that indicated that the property was going to be demolished. We're opposed to the property being demolished. The county supposedly has already spent about $50,000 for the demolition of this property. Why and how can this be if there's been no public decision or any opportunity for public comment at all? Supposedly, there is asbestos on the property. If so...
Your time is up. Thank you.
Praise God.
The next one is Sandra Clark, I believe, on Teams. Are you there, Ms. Clark?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead. Your three-minute start.
Okay, I'm Sandra Clark, calling from Green Valley, Arizona, to express my objection to Cochise County paying for the expenses created by the Crosby-Judd debacle. According to Mr. Crosby, he decided that some people who spoke at the board led him to believe that the voting machines have not been properly accredited. Therefore, against attorney's advice, he decided to not certify the canvas. No proof, no investigation by Mr. Crosby, he just decided to break the law. Based on rumors, and that is not admissible, and this is nothing but hearsay, and that he could have nullified the voters of Cochise County. In top of it, the expenditures by him by this debacle are up north of $300,000. None of the Cochise County residents asked for this to occur. Therefore, I think he should be paying out of his pocket. Ms. Judd, to her credit, acknowledged that he should be held responsible for this expenditure, and she agreed to raise a third, her third of the expenses. I would like to know how far she ended endeavor, and he should be willing to disclose her sources who helped her raise the funds. When you have a court date, Mr. Crosby, show up. I look forward to seeing you in Lima County Superior Court at your next court date. I thank you all, your constituents, an apology, and that you accompany in resignation. Thank you.
The next person is in person Francis Alvarez. And if the next one would be getting ready, it will be Rebecca Jones.
Good morning. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Francis Alvarez. I was born and raised in Miracle Valley. My parents have been there since the beginning of Miracle Valley Bible College. It was actually Miracle Valley Training Center. So I have a huge heart for Miracle Valley. I do not want to see the tabernacle or the buildings there demolished. History plays an important role in getting a better knowledge about any country's culture, traditions, beliefs, religions. They represent a significant era or a milestone in history, and so does Miracle Valley Bible College. Without history, one would have no idea about its origin and the struggle done by those that have gone before to get us where we are today, whether that be good or evil. There is various buildings, old buildings, almost in every part of the world, which represents history of that region. But there are some people who think that these buildings should be knocked down and replaced by new ones. Buildings are more than material. We are here today, I am here today, for the discussion of the Miracle Valley Bible College, that we would keep it. Old buildings have history. They have character that add to the area, and they teach us. They teach us why Miracle Valley is even there. Miracle Valley used to be on the map. My mother worked for AA Allen before he even was deeded the land there in Miracle Valley. His offices were in Dallas, Texas, and that's where she worked. My father was from Wisconsin when he heard about the AA Allen ministries back in about '58. He came out and joined them also. He worked in various departments, driving diesel. He made the records, worked in the record press, as my mother worked in the office. AA Allen married three couples while he was here and had the Bible College, and my parents were the first ones married, Ray and Velma Atchison. They made their home across the highway from the college, where my brothers and my sisters and I were all reared up. My parents never moved away from Miracle Valley. As a matter of fact, they are the only ones that remained in Miracle Valley until just recently. The old that were a part of that ministry have all passed away, with my mom being the last one that never moved away. She just passed in January 2022. Many of the Allen ministry would often come by and visit them and visit the valley, but not just of the Allen ministry. Many curious would stop by and to hear the miraculous reports and see the property. Natives from neighboring reservations would come to show and tell their children of the meetings and how they were healed. But I just want to share a little bit before my time runs out. Miracle Valley Ministries had grade school, Bible College, dairy orchards, hay fields, and they sold to the surrounding community.
Your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Rebecca Jones.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Allen Jones. I would like to request two extra minutes, if that is okay with you.
That's not possible.
Okay. I would like my records put on the comments, my comments put on the records, please. I would like to request an opportunity to discuss this property with you. I am one of the foremost experts on Miracle Valley and on the history of the property. As Tom Crosby has been in touch with me for a number of months, he's aware of this, and the State Historic Preservation Office is working with me to allow them to know everything that they need to know about the history of this property. We can't make decisions based on emotion. We have to make them on facts. And the fact is that this property is a civil rights movement, historical value to this area that Cochise County should be very, very proud of. And what we can do is offer solutions. My organization has a solution. We have means and motive and determination and ability, skill, the right people around us. And what you guys need is a solution. You don't need a derelict set of buildings that continues to be a problem and continues to be an aspiration. You need something that can actually fix that. My organization can do that, and I request the opportunity to discuss this with you further at any opportunity that you will give me. And what I would say is that we care deeply. My great-grandfather founded the town of Miracle Valley. We care deeply about Cochise County, and we don't want to see a lack of jobs and a lack of opportunities or facilities. We want to help be part of that solution. I would say that Dan Coxworth has actually moved outside of the jurisdiction of the law, and Dan Coxworth and myself and several others, including Dan Coxworth, were involved in an email exchange at the beginning of February, where Dan Coxworth was made aware, as yourselves were, that according to the law, there needed to be due diligence with the State Historic Preservation Office, and he proceeded with the demolition instead of following that law. And he has also been misguided in his public assumptions that there are no organizations that could afford this. That's not his job description to decide whether people can afford this. It's his job description to find solutions, and I think he's trying, but this is a solution. There are organizations that can do this, and I would ask you to stop all work on the property in accordance with the law. Give this an opportunity. What's the rush? Let's give this time. Be appropriate with the law. Look at the historical facts. Look at this, and don't do any work in the meantime, like the law responds, requests that you respond. All parties involved want to purchase this property on the basis that the buildings stay. That's where your value is going to be in those buildings. You demolish the buildings, you're not going to get as much money for it. That's fiscally irresponsible.
Your time is up. The next person is on Teams, Jeff Sturgis. Are you available, Jeff?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes starts now.
Good morning. I am Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. The question all Cochise County citizens and voters should be asking Supervisors Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd, along with Recorder Davis Stevens, is how much damage, how much more damage to the county are they really willing to inflict? The latest damage reports comes from Arizona Public Media. I quote, "The Cochise County Board of Supervisors has been ordered to pay more than $35,000 in legal fees in their case against certifying the 2022 general election, spurred by unfounded claims that the vote tabulation machines are inaccurate." This new burden on taxpayers comes on top of $140,000 racked up due to the antics of election deniers Tom Crosby, Peggy Judd, and David Stevens. Please, Tom, Peggy, and David, show us that you will take responsibility for your irresponsible actions. Tell us that you want burden, Cochise County taxpayers, with this and other legal fees you have incurred. Pay these fees yourselves. The judge noted that Supervisor English is made exempt from paying, as she, quote, "She did not oppose the relief sought by the plaintiffs," unquote. And the judge noted that she joined in the request for the court to issue a writ of mandamus to order the board to canvass the election results. Tom Crosby admits defying the judge's order, trying to defend himself by playing with the definition of the words "canvas" and "certification." No one, including the judge, is fooled by his nonsense. Republicans have signed the petition to recall Tom Crosby because they care about fiscal responsibility, and may remember that Tom Crosby campaigned on the slogan that he was, quote, "the taxpayers' champion." Republicans who care about the rule of law know that Tom Crosby has some disnose at the law, disregarding legal advice from the Cochise County Attorney's Office and the Office of the Secretary of State. Tom Crosby can save Cochise County more fiscal pain and exasperation by resigning now. Perhaps before he does, he can go even further to show true repentance and go to the website recalltomcrosby.com to find a way to sign his own petition, his own recall petition, and join the thousands of folks in this district if they're already signed. Thank you.
The next speaker is on Teams, Elizabeth Lopez. Elizabeth, are you there? Elizabeth Lopez, are you off mute? Ms. Lopez? Do you see that she has come online and just is on mute?
Madam Chair, she is online. She is currently muted, though.
If you can hear me, Ms. Lopez, you're muted. I'm gonna have to move on. The next one is on Teams, and it's Radford Hyde. Radford Hyde, are you online, Mr. Hyde?
Hi, good morning.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Can anyone hear me okay? Okay, this is, thank you. This is Radford Hyde, and I live in Sierra Vista. And I'm again wanting to discuss and bring forth the fact that there is an organization under the Secretary of State's office called the Machine Certification Advisory Board. This is the board under the Secretary of State's office, to which all of the election machine manufacturers are to bring their systems for approval for use in the state of Arizona. And they get blessed by this board, or they don't. We have a situation where ESNS never brought forth a change request to the Secretary of State Machine Certification Advisory Board in order to change the previously certified election system, which is ESNS 6.0.4.0. That whole system was designated as a certified system. You can question the certification status and the accreditation status of the certification laboratory, but you can't question this. No one ever brought forth the Express Poll tablets to change the certified system with the Secretary of State Machine Certification Advisory Board. Those machines were brought in by Lisa Mara, and they were used without any authorization by the Machine Certification Advisory Board. I've gone through all the minutes. Heard me say it last time. Judd and Crosby should be champions and should be hailed as champions for their steadfast refusal to go along with the BS that the Secretary of State provided as evidence that that system was certified, because she injected new machines all over that inserted internet communications in order to use the election centers rather than the precinct voting. That's the only way those can work. Those were never approved. They were never even reviewed. It bypassed the whole system 100%. There's proof in the minutes, the meeting minutes of that board.
I don't hear you, Mr. Hyde.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard someone interrupt me. I thought my time was up.
It's almost up. You're in the last minute.
Okay. Anyway, Judd and Crosby should be hailed as heroes for trying to stick to what the rules say. Thank you.
Your time is up now. So, thank you. The next is in person, Randall Limbach.
Good morning, Randall Limbach, Sierra Vista. We've now reached that point in our nation's history where in our founding fathers foresaw a tyrannical government controlling its citizenry. In recent years and months, concerned citizens across this great nation have witnessed and fallen prey to the overtly authoritarian and unconstitutional policies and practices from all levels of government, including those of our own local government officials and bureaucrats. Most recently, this board and many other local and state officials learned of irrefutable evidence that our election system and its machines are defective and our election results non-certifiable. We learned that our Secretary of State's office continually thwarts election integrity efforts through many means, such as affording activist groups greater flexibility with voter registration requirements, disseminating constitutionally protected voter identification data, and perhaps the most egregious refusing to release critical information regarding our election machine hardware and software. Two of our county supervisors who dare to legally act on behalf of their constituents on election integrity continue to be attacked by our own county attorney's office and by the Arizona Secretary of State and Attorney General offices. Why is this? I propose that the citizenry of Cochise County is reawakening and regaining control of our county through our local officials. As our national and state constitutions command we do, I propose that those dark entities who pull the strings of long since corrupted politicians and bureaucrats fear losing their grip over the local citizenry. They fear being discovered as the offenders they are, and they now view Cochise County as the perfect, highly visible stage on which to silence those few remaining prized for freedom. Working together, every individual in this room has the capacity and ability to quickly reverse the corruption and lies that have purposely deceived every legitimate voter and denied many legitimate votes. Demand the immediate restoration of machine-free, paper ballot, full-hand count elections. Thank you.
Allison Morris, and on Teams, are you online, Allison?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Allison Morris, and I'm from Portal. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Supervisor Crosby and Supervisor Judd, I hope the headlines are correct. Cochise County Supervisors ordered to pay fees for reviewing to certify election results. Unfortunately, it will likely be Cochise County taxpayers who will again foot the bill for the additional $36,000 on top of the almost $140,000 we have already shelled out for legal expenses and additional security due to your elections-related misconduct. Still to come is the lawsuit filed by the Attorney General, which will undoubtedly bring the total close to $200,000. This is not fiscal responsibility. It is a frivolous waste of taxpayer dollars. What is profoundly disturbing to me is the lack of shame and remorse you two demonstrate. Unburdened by ethical considerations, you interpret the law as you see fit and carry on as you please, with complete disregard for the consequences of your actions. We taxpayers are the ones taking the brunt of your actions, and we are outraged. You two will be brought to justice, and I am confident that our judicial system will once again show you the error of your ways. When you realize that you do, when will you realize that you do not have the authority to redress citizen complaints about the electoral process? When will you both take full responsibility for your unlawful actions? Stop dismissing them with your misplaced blame, ever-changing excuses, and deeply flawed reasoning. reasoning. If you want to challenge or break the law, please do it on your own time, in your own private life, and with your own money. We had a well-established election process here in Cochise County that was outstanding and exemplary, but you two upended it, creating delays, disruption, and multiple lawsuits. The two of you have proven to be costly liabilities to this county and a very real threat to our democracy. Once again, I ask you both, with all due respect, please resign now and save us all from further needless costs and national embarrassment. Thank you.
Next is Juan Quan. On teams, are you there, Juan?
I am here. Thank you, Ms. English, and a good morning to you and Mr. Tom Crosby and Ms. Judge. Ms. Judd, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again. I would wish that Ms. English would join Tom Crosby and Ms. Judd in advocating for election integrity, for we know that the chain of custody for our election is broken. The mail-in ballots is completely uncertifiable. It cannot be verified. Signature verification is an art and not a science. We know that machines are opaque. Citizens who've stepped up and asked for resignation for Tom Crosby because he advocated for election integrity, it is entirely inappropriate. They are not a danger to democracy. They are advocates for a fair vote, that my vote is not disenfranchised, ruined by dilution in mail-in ballots that are not verifiable, signatures that cannot be compared in any credible way. Talk to anyone that look at signature fraud, signature forgery, and to an expert forger, one can sign an envelope, and you have time in a mail-in election to sign thousands of envelopes for the signature forger to be able to do so. And it would get passed any examiner, no matter how well-trained, on a cursory examination. For someone to say that our elections are good, our processes are good, I need you all to wake up to the reality that our elections are going the way of Venezuela. Please look it up if you're not informed and see how far America has let corruption override our electoral system. I would like for the board to consider not holding elections, including the upcoming one, on May the 16th until the chain of custody of ballots can be ascertained. You have a responsibility to Cochise citizens to validate elections, not a ceremonial function. You are to provide oversight. The buck stop for Cochise County at your desks. I would like Ms. English, Ms. Judge, Ms. Judd, and Mr. Crosby to strongly advocate, all of you, for election integrity, for a secure chain of custody. Thank you.
The next person is on teams, and it's Kara Harris. Kara, are you online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Loud and clear. You have three minutes, Kara.
Thank you, ma'am. For months, or maybe it's been years, since time flies when you're having fun, we have seen proof of fraud in our elections. As a former and current poll worker for over 15 years now, I urge you to rid us of those fraud-laden machines and go back to the one-day, one-vote election with good old reliable poll books. Mail-in ballots should only be utilized by our servicemen unable to be present on Election Day or in extreme matters where registered voters are unable to show up. I ask you to delay the mail-in ballot election for this law enforcement complex proposed by our sheriff. Mail-in ballots are just as fraud-ridden as the machines since I walked my precinct several years ago. I found active voters not even living at the address they were registered at, leaving me to wonder who was voting in their place. This means they had moved years ago, yet someone was voting in their place by mail. This spelled fraud to me. I also strongly request, Mrs. Judd, that you do the right thing and nominate Tom Crosby to be the chairperson of this board, so the county attorney will be kept in their capacity of advisory comments only. They are not allowed to disrupt this meeting but are there to behest of the board, something you, Supervisor English, have failed to do. Thank you very much.
The next person is in person, and it's Alfred Kern.
My name is Alfred Kern. I've been coming here, oh, 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas. I've been coming here since last February. That's 14 months, and nothing has been done. I don't know if you haven't been listening. Have you been listening? Vow your head or shake your head no, because nothing has been done. We still have Cipriano, San Mateo, Padron being graded. County Principal, with over 30 homes back, people back there, not being graded. I asked a couple meetings ago that if the county is not going to maintain the roads, keep the county vehicles off. Good Friday, truck number 58, there was a guy sitting in it on a keel, or whatever the name of the road was. But anyway, he wouldn't even roll down his window to talk to me. I talked to his window, and I said to him, "The road is not being maintained. Get out." He just sat there. I went down to County Principal, and I got a phone call. I was sitting talking to the person who made the call me, and I looked in my mirror, and that guy in the truck was blasting down the road. Now, that's why I want these vehicles to stay out. You know, they're tearing up the road. They're tearing up the road more than what the people that lives there do. Now, like I said again, I'll say it again, keep the county vehicles out. They have no business being back there. If they want to come back and inspect something, don't be blasting down the road to get to wherever they're going. That doesn't need to happen. And like I've said before, Cipriano, San Mateo, Padron, these are all roads that have, I think, have one home on them. There's over 30 off of County Principal, and you don't do a thing. We have 30 homes paying taxes that aren't getting any, any benefits from. I think it's time to start. Like I said, I've been coming here for the past 14 months, and before that, I had talked to Ann English at the county fairs.
Your time is up, Mr. Kern. Thank you. Next is, I believe, in person, Linda Coontz.
Good morning. My name is Linda Coontz, and I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona. In the event that the Cochise County Sheriff's Office and county jail together form the wall between our citizens and the bad guys that are convicted in our court systems, there is no argument that a new and bigger jail facility is absolutely required. Sheriff Daniels proved that fact in his presentations, but did so without any projections or estimates on size, facility additions, or increases in staff necessary. The words "we don't know" were often woven into answers to questions relating to necessary size and cost. He did say that although he could not detail the cost numbers, it appeared as though the facility could be built for approximately $100 million or so. The Cochise County Board of Supervisors, who bear the burden of this project's cost analysis and subsequent payment, along with the county manager, have provided a good argument for funding by means of one-half of one-cent sales tax. The hiccup comes when we realize that one-half of one-cent sales tax would raise a sum of less than $9 million per year over the 25 years that it would run, a sum of just under $220 million over that 20-year period would result. I have heard this board talk about transparency of projects and ballot measures, but no such concepts have been forthcoming for the dollar amount between the approximate $100 million in building costs and maintenance and the $220 million taxed to the public over 25 years. The county manager has stated that he doesn't want to spend the money to hire a cost analysis done until the jail district has been funded. Isn't that a little like closing the barn door after the horse left? I have a vague recollection here of hearing Nancy Pelosi, as Speaker of the House, say that we must pass this bill so that we can see what's in it. The voters are being asked to ignore the county's own abilities to estimate costs based on recent expenditures by other counties for like facilities in similar rural communities. Can't we do better than this? Explain it to us before you ask for the money. Postpone the vote on the jail district issue until you've provided all available plan and cost information to the voters, and do the job that you were sworn to do. Thank you.
Next one is in person, Johnny Wilson.
Johnny Wilson, I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona. Don't have anything prepared today. I've not heard a bad mouth anybody, but I would like people to do their job. I'd like people to research before they shoot their mouth off saying about this is illegal, that's illegal. I mean, that's one thing when I was a kid, I was brought up to be honest and tell the truth. If not, I had to go outside and get a switch off this tree. My mom threatened me all the time. She never once beat me, though, because I always come true with it. But anyway, been around these parts for a long time. My mom and dad were married in Pima County in 1943, so we can have been around the South West for years. One thing I hear people say all the time, it's on the news all the time, they say all these illegals that are coming in are going to take the jobs for the Hispanics and the blacks and everything. That's not necessarily true. My mom and dad were what they call fruit tramps. We followed the whatever was picking, lettuce, whatever. They worked in the sheds, everything else. And you see, well, I am a little white. And I'm not a prejudiced person at all, was never raised to be prejudiced, but this stuff people call in and say how Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd are making up all this stuff and costing the county money because of the voting machines. Well, look what the Supreme Court of Arizona just said. Carrie Lake has the right and her lawyers to look at the chain of custody in Maricopa County. So what's Maricopa County doing? They're refusing to give it to her. So are they breaking the law? I think so. You know, if you're a government official, you should be able to give things out. And you hear this stuff all the time. I don't know. I get so disgusted. All this woke stuff they got nowadays, you can't say a certain thing because somebody gets offended, or this, or that. And I have a really beautiful great-granddaughter, lives in Oregon, and she sent us some pictures the other day. She got the nose rings and all the stuff in her. That's her job. I still love her. I don't hate her because of that. I don't agree with what she does, but I don't know. Why can't we just all get along? And if you're going to tell something, tell the truth. Don't make up a bunch of bullcrap. I'm tired of that. I'm tired of our leaders trying to tell us, like, right now, our government's trying to get rid of all the religious people. Now they're onto the Catholic Church. They're trying, I don't know. I love my country, but we got one of the crookedest governments in the face of the earth. And so we need to start right here in Cochise County, and we need to step up. I want the supervisor to step up, and thank you.
Your time is up. Jean?
Good morning. My name is Jean Giuffreid. I'm from Hereford, Arizona, and thank you so much for this opportunity. So here we go again. The latest attack on our board is another example of the opposition pitching a fit every time something doesn't go their way. So now it's an attack on the board for doing exactly what they're supposed to do, and that is to listen to their constituents and do what we ask you to do, one of which was to align the election director's duty under the recorder's office. In the latest complaint, it states that the county itself, the county boards, can exercise only those powers ceded to them by the legislature, which is exactly what was done. Arizona revised Statute 11-251 gives the board the right to fill by appointment any vacancies occurring in the county and the precinct offices. The complaint gave an example, though, which said this sheriff cannot give his powers and duties related to law enforcement or jail supervision to the county assessor and vice versa. The problem with that example is the election director is not an elected officer. So like the sheriff or the assessor, the election director, whose boss is the county administrator, works for the board. All of those duties fall under the scope of the board. Again, there have been other counties that have done this, put the election director under the recorder's office. For Pete's sakes, Maricopa County did it for 65 years. Yuma and Coconino also did it as well. Another claim in the complaint is that Stevens will unlawfully exercise authorities over the election matters, which the board has exclusive statutory authority. Stevens was directed by the board to do this, so there is nothing illegal about that. Illegal payments was also something mentioned. RSARS 16536 states that compensation of election officials or officers shall be fixed by the board and shall be a county charge. So again, where is the violation of the law? Another question I have, and I've been asking this for a while, why is Cochise County singled out all the time? Why is that? And why aren't we being defended for doing the right thing? In my opinion, we are being harassed. And why is it? Why is that, when once again, we're doing exactly what we should be doing and have the authority to do? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Joseph Patterson.
Joseph Patterson, Sierra Vista, Arizona. Good morning. And as I'm sitting and listening, one thought struck me, and that is, how can you put a price on defending the Constitution when over a million of our best, bravest, and youngest have died to defend it? And our board has taken it upon themselves to do the same thing now, to defend the Constitution, to honor their oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Why is that? Because the Constitution Because the Constitution gives the people the power to rule the government. And the way we do that is through our vote. Our vote is sacred. If we lose our vote, we lose our power. We become slaves to whoever takes the controls through the process. I would, I'm proud, I'm thankful for our board for having the courage to stand up and do this. They have paid a great price, and they continue to pay a great price. But they have the courage, the patriotism, the loyalty to defend our rights, most importantly, our vote. A recent Gallup poll I was reading stated that 50% of the people, 50%, do not trust the election results. 50% have no confidence in our results. That is, that should not be. When you look around the world, there are places, especially in the Western European nations, that if, where the, where the confidence is 90%, 90% confidence. Can you imagine? And they, they're using a system, the old-fashioned system, the hand count system, for the very reason that they do not want to go through what we're going through right now. We don't have to go through this. We do not have to go through this. I encourage the board to act and to restore confidence in our elections.
Thank you. I feel to mention to Ms. Jones that we do have a packet here that will be made part of the record. And so I wanted you to know that it was received and it will be part of the record. All right. The next we have is the consent agenda.
I believe that I have been criticized once again, so I would like to answer those criticisms. And I know, as you do, because you're a teacher, that repetition is part of the learning process. So to start with, it is all about the voting machines, and if we can't check them, my constituents don't want them. All the court cases since October 24, 2022 are properly the responsibility of County Attorney McAtire. Now Ms. Morse, Clark, and Sturgis are correct that there are serious issues about the costs of various lawsuits and appeals, as Mr. Dr. Patterson also mentioned, but that is, again, because of the wrong advice from the county attorney. It would be a lot cheaper to simply surrender to, in this case, Chris Mays, right? But I don't think that that's what we should do. As I mentioned, all subsequent lawsuits, appeals, legal fees, and departure of key county personnel were caused by the errant advice of County Attorney McAtire at the October 24th meeting, 2022. Again, to address Ms. Morse's comments, the court costs are very unfortunate. Myself and Ms. Judd voted in favor of the provisions of ARS 16602B, which we voted in favor of October 24, 2022. So it is subsequently not my team incurring the expenses. It is the other team, the other side. So with regard to any allegations that I illegally refused to certify December 1, 2022, the attorney for the board removed the case to federal court. The constituents' issues in the voting, is the voting machines, and the laws and regulations for voting machines in question are in federal law, and the case would have been heard better in federal court, but that didn't happen. Again, Ms. Judd and I voted for statutory hand count of all precincts, not all ballots, which is 16602B of the ARSs, and that would have still been a very minimal count. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I have even more documentation for my position, should it be necessary. But that concludes my comments. Thank you.
The next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and that's items 1 through 7. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve agenda, consent agenda items 1 through 7.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. We now move to the action items. The first one is from Supervisor Judd. Would you like to put it on the, give us the motion and then your discussion afterwards?
Madam Chairman, I, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District 3, roll-offs for San Simone community cleanup in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now would you explain for the public's benefit?
Okay. So it is one of the, the things that are allowed for us to use our community enhancement funds to assist in cleaning up communities. And I say fortunately, again, there are people in the community of San Simone that have decided that they need to have a big community cleanup and help some of their neighbors, including removing some of the things that have accumulated over the years to, that aren't of use. And this is something we, we can do with these community enhancement funds, and it's a pleasure to see their communities work together and, and clean up and, and create a better place for themselves to live, so.
Sounds like a good project. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. We also have a request from Ms. Judd on number nine. Let's have a motion on the floor.
I'll do, I'll do that, too. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District 3, roll-offs for Willow Lakes community cleanup and the amount of $3,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second now for your discussion.
And, and it's a little bit of the same story in Willow Lakes. We've been looking at that community and talking about it for a long time, how they needed to get themselves together. They have a community center there, which is a perfect place for them to gather and have the roll-offs placed and everything. But then recently, we've had a few situations with the, the, I can't remember what they're called, the people who look at families that have accumulated too much junk, and they give them orders to clean up. Sometimes that department is able to help with these costs, but right now, they, they don't have any money. So I'm working a little bit, it's still through the same procedure, but it's a little bit more focused so that certain properties that are actually going to be in violation, they need these roll-offs to be placed in their community, and that will help remove that from the county rolls, you know, and, and they'll be not in violation, but also the other community, community around can benefit. So it's, we're working with code enforcement as well as just to help a community clean up this time. So that was a long explanation, but thank you.
Good idea. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. The next one is item number 10.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the City of Tucson High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA Grant Agreement, HT-23-2909, between the City of Tucson and Cochise County in the amount of $171,113, effective January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2024.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is Mr. McAtire on the phone, or are you speaking for him?
Madam Chair, Kenny Reeves from the County Attorney's Office is here to present this agenda item.
I didn't hear you.
Madam Chair, Kenny Reeves from the County Attorney's Office is here to present that agenda item.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. And thank you for, for hearing me out. The, the grant has been with our office for nearly 20 years now, and it provides full salary for a drug prosecutor and for a, a legal secretary for our drug unit. And as you can imagine, with the issues that we have at the border right now, we are continually having, seeing a rising, a rise in case numbers dealing with not just border crimes, but drugs as well. So I thank you for your consideration of this, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Does board member have any questions?
Just how long have you been with the county, Mr. Reeves?
I have been with the county 10 years next month.
Any comments, Ms. Judd, or questions?
I don't have any questions, but it is good. I, I feel like it's a very positive note to, to cooperate with other communities in, in this, especially right now, because Pima County, they have their own problems, and we're able to work together really well. And I appreciate that. In, in these type situations, we, we need to work together, so thank you.
Hey, as you just mentioned, it's worked for a very long time, but the process comes through the City of Tucson.
Yes.
And so we work through that. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, members.
Next is number 11. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Congressional Committee Oriented Policing Services, COPS, grant 15JCOPS-22-GG-01462-TECP, awarded to the Cochise County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $246,000, effective March 15, 2022 through March 31, 2024, to purchase search and rescue radio equipment, tracks, integrated citation equipment, Panasonic tablet, and miscellaneous cell phone equipment, including all associated taxes and fees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You have any other details you want to give us, Mr. Wilson?
Just, ma'am, that what, what we want to do with this money is we're looking at purchasing exactly what Ms. Judd said. We're also looking at some mobile data computers, the NDCs, for our vehicles, which will alleviate some of the costs from IT. But she pretty much covered everything that we're looking to get from this agreement.
Those vehicles now already have that, but you're replacing some?
Yes, ma'am. The vehicles that do have the NDCs right now, they have exceeded their age and, and then some, they've, they've gone two lifetimes, and so they are in need of replacement.
Okay. Any other questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, I'm assuming you had your questions answered, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 12, Board Administration, could I have a motion on the floor, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve Family Conciliation Court-Pretium Mediators Professional Service Agreements, 23-08-SUP-01, between the Cochise County Superior Court and Clark, Arizona Legal Services, and David M. Juarez for mediation and conciliation services, effective April 11, 2023.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Ms. Flores, would you like to explain this a little more?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Cochise County provides family conciliation services under the authority of the Arizona law, ARS 25-381, for married parties who are considering or who are in the process of divorce. Family Conciliation Court provides mediation services related to parents with minor children involved in disputes concerning divorce, legal separation, paternity, or post decree matters, with the goal of determining legal decision-making and parenting time. Family Conciliation Court provides conciliation services to help spouses who are experiencing an ongoing conflict, which may lead to divorce or separation. Cochise County Superior Court conducting a bidding, a bidding process for qualifications and received the two interested vendors to enter into a contract. If these services were not available to parties, it would cause a backlog to our family law cases, and parties would not be able to resolve their matters.
There was not a cost for this. Do you have a line item cost for what this contracts cost?
We do. The line item is under mandated service, and we also receive grant funding from the state for these services. In the past, we did have an employee with the courts and due to retirement, and just because we are not able to obtain qualified candidates locally, it was a challenge that we faced, and we had to move forward with the bidding process.
So what's the line item cost of this?
It is, I don't have a total, but I do have a per-case amount and how many cases we hear a month. So per case, it would be a $525 charge that we would receive from the mediator, and we hear 12 to 15 cases a month.
Thank you. There, sounds as though it's a service that we not only should provide, but we can provide now with these contracts.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, Ms. Flores, I think that I'm very much in favor of this, this program, and what, from what I understand, conciliation is the opposite of getting divorced or completing a divorce.
Correct. We also provide those services if anyone is in a situation where they would like to do conciliation first.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, Ms. Judd, questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Next is a contract with Stan Tech Consulting. Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Contract 23-17-DEV-01 with Stan Tech Consulting Services and Terricon for Environmental Protection Agency EPA Brownfields Grant Implementation Assistance, effective April 11, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so we have more brownfield grant.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excuse me. The county received and the board of supervisors accepted already a $500,000 grant from the EPA to perform environmental assessments of brownfield sites in Cochise County. To perform these assessments and the administrative tasks associated with the grant, the county posted a, an RFP, a Request for Proposals, for public bid and received three proposals. The staff is recommending awarding the contract to two vendors. The first is Stan Tech, who we have been working with, with the first grant we received. They will perform tasks one and two of the grant, which include public outreach and reporting to the EPA. And the second contractor is Terricon, who will perform tasks four and five, which include the Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments, area-wide planning, and cleanup and reuse plans. As you may recall, when accepting the grant last year, this is the second round of funding that the county has received from the EPA, and it has been a benefit and encouraging redevelopment and reuse of brownfield sites here in the county.
And the, the cost of these services, is that part of the grant?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. The grant, we have to hire somebody who's qualified to do these site assessments, and so they are then on contract with us to perform those assessments.
Well, Stan Tech must have done a good job in the past because the, the brownfield grant, the second one, was easier to obtain because they knew that we did it correctly. So thank you for that.
Yes, and I agree. Stan Tech did a great job. It's been a great partner through this process and deploying these funds into the community to help get a better use out of property here in Cochise County.
Any other questions or comments from the board members?
Mr. Cox, do you know where and what we are going to clean?
This grant is for assessment purposes only. It's cannot be used for cleanup, so we primarily perform assessments or surveys of properties here in the county that are nominated, and with the permission of the property owner to access the property, brownfields include asbestos, lead-based paint, soil contamination, ground contamination.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Judd?
No, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, that it was for assessment. I just wanted to clarify that, that it was for assessment only, for, just to do the engineering and make suggestions to the owners and give them a plan to move forward, so.
Good. Hearing no other, no other questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. The next one, I need a motion for an inter-fund transfer.
Madam Chair, I move we approve inter-fund transfer of $22,700 from Contingency Capital Improvement Fund, Fund 400, to Bisbee Douglas International BDI Airport Professional Services Fund, Fund 105, for a landscape installation at the BDI Airport Terminal Building.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a, a motion and a second. And how long do you think the landscaping is going to take?
So they won't start until the weather gets warm, and they can treat the invasive grass that's currently out there. That'll take three treatments. So the timing of this, if approved, is good because it's starting to warm up, obviously, and they will begin in May. They'll treat it to kill the grass, and then we will move forward with landscaping, primarily rock.
Low water use landscaping.
Low water, not a lot of vegetation. On the east side of the terminal building, the entrance from the parking area will have some low water use landscaping and some enhancements with pavers and things like that. So this is the last, last piece of the puzzle of the, the terminal building remodel.
Well, with the, with the newly remodeled building and people going to access it more, this is certainly something that, that we should do. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. The last item, could I have a motion on the ARPA funds?
Circling. Madam Chair, I move we approve an additional obligation of $30,000 of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the countywide fire alerting system.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so did we get more people joining?
No, ma'am. So we need additional $30,000 to install some external antennas and some equipment that wasn't seen when we did the initial survey to make sure we have backup service in case the internet goes down. They can still get those alerts out of those fire stations. So this is the last piece to, to push it over the edge and complete the fire alerting system installation.
Well, it was a, a great idea, and it serves the whole county. Every fire department is accessible to this information now. Do you have it installed everywhere, or is it just still in the planning for some?
So it is installed at all locations that, that we're able to. There's a couple that they have construction going on, so we had to push it back a little bit. Other than that, they have all been installed and are operational as of this last week.
Great, great. Any other comments or questions?
None at this time.
Ms. Judd? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
State and federal legislation, and all of you have been aware of the, the bills that are going on at the state legislature. I have not one in particular to bring up. Mr. Carl Wachke, do you have a, a county minister, administrator report?
Yes, and this is regarding the jail district caps on sales tax. So just to remind everyone, if you're not registered to vote, please register vote by April 17th in order to get your mail-in ballot. Also, on April 19th, all ballots will be mailed, and then on May 16th is the day of election. So I just want to inform people of those dates, and I will keep informing as dates come up at our next board meeting.
Okay. Current events, District One.
I'll pass.
District Two, I will pass. Ms. Judd?
I don't want to pass. I never do. So I don't know if everyone reads the Current Magazine, the SSVC Currents Magazine they send out, but my, I, I just on a break just a little bit, and then I, I just opened it to the centerfold, and my brother-in-law and sister are growing sunflowers in Wilcox, which is a new crop, and they have a, a page about sunflowers. It's a water, low water use crop. It's, it's just a neat little information. So my sister made the centerfold, whatever that means to the community. To me, it's a wonderful thing. It's easy to get to. And right across the page from that is the ARC program. Rabbi Ben Zehunshem Taub from, from Sierra Vista started this with, and, and with the schools in the community. And if you have any questions about it, it's just a neat little yellow plastic arc that students can donate as a classroom project. And I, and I talked to Jackie Clay, our superintendent, about it at one time and thought it was neat, but there's an article about it. And I, I just think, pick up your, pick up your really neat little Currents Magazine and read through it. Want to encourage everybody to do that. And, and note, my sister is an amazing person. Thank you.
Okay. Next meeting will be tomorrow, April 12th, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room for a budget work session specifically early projections for revenues, expenses, and expenditure limits. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned.